Let's stand for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the Act of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the council meeting of May 22, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Notion in the second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Five zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, approval of the minutes of the council meeting held on June 5, 2023.
So moved. Twenty, that should be 23, right?
Yes. Notion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Five zero, Mr. Lauer. Special reports, there are none. Audience comments, this is the part of the meeting where any member of the audience can speak for up to five minutes on a non-agenda item. Go ahead, Ms. Shannon.
I just want to ask, do you all know when the district lines will be submitted to the county board of elections, or has it been submitted?
It has been sent to them. We're going to be working with them in terms of how they implement that. So they'll be in place for the fall election.
I know, but, you know, are they implementing them yet, do you know, the county board of elections? Like have they?
They have received from us.
I know, but you don't, they haven't notified you if they are going by the new lines yet, or anything?
The intention is that they'll go by the new lines for the fall election. So we have to meet with them to come up with a method to be able to describe it in such a way that they can put the notices out so people can understand where they need to go.
So you have no idea when people will be notified of a new polling place when they would have to go?
I do not.
You don't know that, okay. All right, the other thing is, do you all know when, have I missed the fire station opening?
Yep.
Did I miss it?
Well, that was the private one.
No, no, I don't want the private one.
I don't think we've scheduled the public one yet.
Yeah, there isn't, that hasn't been scheduled yet.
That hasn't been scheduled yet?
No.
You don't know when that is?
I do not know.
I was told it was going to be in June.
It's up to the chief to get it scheduled. What they're going to do is, because there's limited parking there, they're going to send invitations out to people in the surrounding neighborhoods to try to get them to schedule times to come in and see the station.
Uh huh, makes sense.
Well, that does make sense, they should, they should all volunteer there, that's what they should do. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Shannon. Anyone else from the audience?
John McCarthy, 105 Greenbrier Drive. I stopped at the library on Saturday to pick up three books that I requested. And the slip said, I saved $180, so please keep up your funding of the library. The bottom of the slip says, year-to-date, I saved $24,000 visiting the library. When I was at the library, it was buzzing, it was full of chairs, Margaret, the librarian, had an event there, and it was full to overflowing. They had to stop taking names for the waitlist, it was so packed. Some historical about Peters Township residents event. The other thing I have to say is, the last couple township meetings I've been at, I've noticed several council members, three, playing with their cellphones during the council meeting. And I think it makes you look very disinterested in what's going on. And the couple residents that I ran that by weren't too happy with hearing that.
Just so you know, sir, oftentimes council, as do I, you know, if we have to look something up that's being talked about, if we have references, unfortunately, it's at our fingertips. So if there's a dispute or we're looking at history, I mean, there-
I don't buy that.
Well, I'm telling you, I know I do it because if something comes up legally, I'm looking to see if we've seen that before.
That's what the kids say at school, too.
And, well, you know, we're called upon to answer questions quickly, and we'd rather you be informed, and I know council's the same way. So if you see that, yeah, be mindful, that that may not always be going on, but there are times I know that it is.
That's your excuse. Thank you.
My explanation.
Anybody else from the audience wish to speak? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to unfinished business, of which there is none. We'll move right into new business proclamation designating July 21, 2023, as Pennsylvania Park and Recreation Professionals Day in Peters Township.
So the National Recreation and Parks Association designates July as Park and Recreation Month. And in that month, Friday, July 21, is designated to celebrate the service of recreational professionals. And we're asking that the township council declare that day as Park and Recreation Professional Day in Peters Township.
I move that we designate July 21, 2023, as Pennsylvania Park and Recreation Professionals Day in Peters Township.
Second. Notion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Five zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, resolution amending the Peters Township Act 537 Sewage Facility Plan so as to provide access to sewage services for the lots in the Macrono subdivision.
As you will recall, the last meeting, council authorized the subdivision of this property. For them to be able to get a building permit for it, there has to be an amendment to our Act 537 Sewage Facility Plan to authorize a connection to the sewer system. So it's my recommendation that council adopt Resolution 060123, amending Peters Township Act 537 Sewage Facility Plan.
So, second.
Notion in the second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Five zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, award of a contract for the purchase of in-car cameras for use by the Peters Township Police Department.
The Peters Township 2023 budget includes the Equitable Sharing Program Fund. This fund accounts for the revenues received by Peters Township as a result of the police department's participation in the U.S. Food and Drug Administration's Task Force. In 2023, the Equitable Sharing Program included an appropriation of $916,000 for capital equipment related to the police patrol. And so far, we've committed $272,303 of that amount. What is, the township has received quotations for the purchase of in-car cameras, as well as support of those cameras over a 65-month period. The initial cost is $42,042. The value of the entire contract is $206,813. In the manager's report, it makes reference to the fact that this purchase is being done under the Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing Program. Since we have received the quote, Axion no longer has a contract through Co-Stars, but they do have a contract through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program. It's another cooperative purchasing program that we participate in, and it's for that exact same amount of money.
Well, I had a question, is that, we have this currently, right?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have license plate readers currently?
Well-
Because that was an issue, remember?
That would be an enhancement-
About whether we're going to do that anymore, whatever.
That would be an enhancement to the cameras that are in the cars. I will tell you this, the license plate readers that we have at the intersections have proven to be valuable in terms of identifying people who have broken the law. And I think that's the reason why Chief Grimes is recommending that we incorporate that technology into our cars as well.
I'm going to make a motion that we award the contract to Axion Enterprises for the purchase and support of 12 in-car cameras for use by Peters Township Police Department through the Co-Stars Cooperative-
Sourcewell.
Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program in the amount of $206,813.44.
Second. Notion in the second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Five zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, award of a contract for the purchase of a motorcycle for use by the Peters Township Police Department.
So this purchase is again being done under the Equitable Sharing Program Fund. The picture shows the Yamaha motorcycle that the police department currently has. What they're looking to do is to replace it with a Harley-Davidson Electroglide motorcycle.
What are we going to do with the old one?
We're going to sell it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we award a contract to Z&amp;M Cycle Sales for the purchase of the 2023 Harley-Davidson Electroglide Motorcycle Model FLHTP with specified accessories for use by Peters Township Police Department for the amount of $27,174.64.
Second. Notion in the second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Five zero, Mr. Lauer. Next, award of a contract for the purchase of computer hardware for use by the ShakeCog Accident Reconstruction Team.
So as you will recall, when we were developing the budget for the Equitable Sharing Program Fund, council had agreed, based upon the recommendation of the police chief, to set aside certain amounts of money that would be shared with ShakeCog, both for the CERT team, as well as the accident reconstruction team. This project, which is the purchase of computer equipment needed to do accident reconstruction, is being done under a competitive, under a cooperative purchasing program, the Keystone Network Cooperative Program. While this equipment will be used by ShakeCog, ownership of it will be retained by the township. So it's going to be my recommendation that council award a contract, the CDWG, for the purchase of a laser scanner and associated equipment through the Keystone Network Cooperative Purchasing Program, the amount of $111,280.
And the equipment will remain ours?
The equipment remains ours.
I'll make a motion that we award a contract to CDW-G for the purchase of the LEICA-RTC 360 Laser Scanner and Associated Equipment in support of 12 in-car cameras for use by the ShakeCog Accident Reconstruction Team through the Keystone Network Cooperative Purchasing Program in the amount of $111,280.52.
I'll second that. Notion in the second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Five zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, amendment to the contract with Cargill, Inc. regarding the purchase of salt.
So as everyone is aware, we had a very mild winter last year. We have a requirement under our salt contract through ShakeCog to purchase 80% of an allotment. Normally, we would be required to purchase that by July 1. Cargill is well aware that everyone in the South Hills has had this problem. And what they've agreed to do is to extend the deadline for completing the purchases to December 31, 2023. And so it's going to be my recommendation that council approve a contract amendment with Cargill, extending the deadline.
I'll make a motion that we amend the contract with Cargill, Inc., extending the deadline for the purchase until December 31, 2023.
I'll second.
Notion in the second, any discussion?
I did have a question, what are we going to do with the salt if we have to buy it, and we don't have any room?
We'll store it, you know, this is what we would have done in July, we would store it outside in Tarpit.
Okay.
Yeah. But I think we're currently sitting on-
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand tons of salt already that's sitting here.
Is that a lot?
Oh, if you add to it what's outstanding, it would be a normal, it would be a normal year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
In a typical year, November, December, do we ever take deliveries, or is it normally?
Yes.
We have?
Yeah, we do, we normally take delivery sometime in December.
Yeah. Our storage capacity rate is 4,000 tons. That tent that you see up by the amphitheater, storage capacity is 4,000 tons.
How many do we have now?
7,000.
We have spaced out below than we also-
Well, I know that, but-
Yeah, so it's filled to the top.
Better hope it snows a little bit.
That's what Ryan keeps saying.
Yes.
Not bad, just, you know, they were coming or something.
I would rather have to deal with the storage thing.
Not too many years ago, I think we were short on salt, right?
Yeah, I remember that, we had to go out and bid it, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Five zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, payroll and bills. I spoke with Dr. Perosko on Friday, advised me, he reviewed the payroll and bills, found them to be in order. So I'll make a motion that we approve, the same as submitted.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Five zero, Mr. Lauer. Nothing under correspondence?
Nope.
Anyone want to discuss any of the various committee or board minutes? Okay. Move on to miscellaneous, solid waste services contract?
We've opened the bids, ShakeCog opened the bids on the solid waste contract. This is a brief summary of some of the big quoted prices. We don't have the complete tabulation yet. But as we had suggested to you previously, there's going to be a substantial increase in the cost of collection for solid waste and recyclables. Next year, that increase is 27%. So, you know, right now, the charge that's going to homes is about $70. Don't be surprised that when we do the calculations with the discounts and everything else, that you're looking at something between 90 and 100-plus dollars.
Per quarter?
Yes, yeah. And we, there's, we need to have some discussions, too, about what we're doing with things like backyard collection, discounts for senior citizens, discounts for individuals with low incomes. We have to figure out how we're going to balance that in coming up with a fee.
And is it definite that it's maybe like the one and one?
You get, what will happen is you can only use one container for both recycling, one container for garbage. If you want an additional container, there'll be a fee of $100 per year payable to Waste Management. I think that's going to, for many people, that's going to be what causes them to come in and see us.
Yeah.
A hundred bucks isn't that bad there for a year.
No, it isn't.
And then do you have to pay for the cost of the container?
The, as I understand it, again, I haven't seen the bid tab yet. As I understand it, you're paying that $100 fee, they're giving you a container and picking it up, so.
Now, are we going to keep the same containers we have, now are we getting all new containers?
Well, again, that's one of the things we're going to come to you about, you know, our recycling containers are 10 years old, and we're starting to have to replace lids and wheels. And we have a price on replacing those containers. And there's also an opportunity to get grant funding for that. The last time around, the state picked up 90% of the cost. And in which case, it seems to me to make sense that we're replacing them, rather than for us to continue to piecemeal fixing things.
And now, will we owe to recycled glass, right?
Glass is, was now going to be picked up at the curb again. You know, Ryan and I have been talking about this, I, and again, we'll have a further discussion. I think you still want to continue to collect glass at the fire station as a drop-off. There's a lot of people who prefer to do it that way, for a variety of reasons. One thing we know for sure is that the chances of the glass actually being recycled is much, is much higher when it's actually separated there. So I think we'd want to, might want to consider taking it both, both ways.
Well, if they're going to recycle glass again, then there must be a market for it, right?
Oh, there is a market for it.
What about all the glass we recycle? Are we going to be able to negotiate some sort of a payment for that?
Well-
We pay them.
Well, and we still do pay them, but-
You know, if they're going to take that money and make money, if they're going to take that glass and make money, I mean, maybe they should either reduce what we pay them for the dumpsters, or, you know, kick something back to us.
Actually, one of the things that Ryan arranged is to have a different hauler taking it. And I think as a result of that, our costs for actually picking it up and taking it to the site is much lower than it was. But I don't know that it's enough to cover the, that the value of the glass is enough to cover the cost of the haul.
I don't expect it to be, but I'm just saying, we should get some benefit out of it if they're making money on the other end.
Yeah.
Even ten bucks or something like that.
This is going to be a discussion we're going to be having with council as we, as we get the complete bid document in. There's no question that Waste Management is going to be your hauler, there were only two bidders. The other hauler, Noble, really, they provided bids for automated collection, but they did it in such a way that it was obvious that they're not interested in doing automated collection. They're only interested in doing manual collection, and those costs are just astronomical. And so this is, this is the way you're going to end up going.
Ms. Shannon, do you have a question?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, you know, I don't make much waste garbage, because, you know, I live alone, so I eat out a lot. So, you know, people like me, I only put my garbage out, like, maybe every other week. So I guess you all wouldn't mind if I went, I'll let somebody use my container, you know?
I was going to say, I'll be over if I have that. I know where you live, you know?
I mean, I might negotiate a fee with them, because it's really, I, it's very rarely that I, I can't fill up a garbage can, I really can't. I mean, the garbage man loves me, he waves it every time he sees me, he's like, he doesn't have to scuttle my house. And that goes for recycling, too. I mean, I just, I don't, you know, so I mean, that is, I mean, I, I still work, but I, it's on a part-time basis. I should not be working at my age, I am, okay? So, but the thing that is, you know, it's like I'm being punished, because I don't have all that much garbage, really, you know? So you're all okay with me negotiating, if you can, right?
Lock yourself up.
I just don't want to get in trouble, all right?
Okay, next item, township tour. We're going to do that on June 27.
June 27, I was hoping, I know that we had previously talked about 6:30, I was hoping maybe at 6:15, we could gather at the library, because that's where we're going to start the tour.
Works for me.
Oh, I'm sorry, 6:15, you said?
It's possible.
I'm looking at my phone.
Okay. Good for everybody. All right.
I'll tell you after.
Next item, traffic study Sugar Camp Road.
I'm going to ask Ryan, so this is something that came out of the Traffic Calming Committee.
Yeah, this was actually a request of Peters Township Police Department. They've been doing a lot of traffic enforcement along the township portion of Sugar Camp, which runs from Churchill Road, basically down to Tracks Farm. We had Mike Mudry, our traffic engineer, go out in February and do a speed survey. What he found was that the, the speed thresholds did qualify it for traffic calming. The one thing I would note, the state has Sugar Camp Road from Bebout to Churchill, the speed limit there is 35. This township portion, the speed limit is 25 miles an hour. So Mike developed the first phase of a traffic calming plan that we reviewed at the Traffic Calming Committee on, that was a couple weeks ago. I don't know, May 25, sorry. But his first, yeah, so his first phase of it does not, it's a less intense phase. It involves pavement markings, flex post delineators, and signage that's really designed to get people to slow down in those bends along Sugar Camp in that area. The Traffic Calming Committee has recommended the implementation of this particular traffic calming plan, this Phase 1. We can do it all in-house with the Public Works Department. And afterwards, Mike is going to go back, probably at some point in the fall or spring of next year, and reevaluate its effectiveness. And if it is effective, we're good. If not, we may have to go to a more aggressive traffic calming plan in this area. So I just want to make you aware.
And since it's doing nothing that requires action by council, this is something that the Public Works Department can do on its own.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I'm a skeptic of those white posts, and you guys know, you put them in my front yard last year. And the only thing it's done is actually helps people to speed at night, because now you can actually see where the road are. So it's actually like a run now, as opposed to before, people actually slowed down when they came around the bend. But that's my opinion on it.
Next is a traffic study Crosswinds Drive.
Yes, based upon council's direction, we asked Mr. Mudry to look at whether or not there was a need for a stop sign on, at the intersection with Crosswinds Drive. It does not meet the warrants for, for a stop sign. The thing that he indicated, if we wanted to, we could put up pedestrian crossing ahead signs. But it does not meet the warrants for a stop sign. And as a rule, unless an intersection meets those warrants, the township has not been willing to put up signs, so.
Well, you won for two, Ms. Shannon.
Well, I'd like to ask, what is, what was his reasoning? What's the reason?
There are, and I can't tell you that specifically, but there are a set of criteria that you need to be able to legally put a stop sign in place. And this, whatever those criteria are, this doesn't meet it.
All right, next is installation of bat boxes.
Well, you know what, before we go on, I just want to show, this is something that was actually, you know, kind of in line with what Ryan was saying. On Valleybrook Road, they put these skip lines in and plated, and painted this island in. And as somebody who goes through that intersection a lot, this really has worked. And I think it's, you know, the kind of thing that I give Mike Mudry credit for is simple solutions that address problems that are out there. The other thing I want to let you know, on June 26, the detour to enable the construction of the roundabout is going to go into place. Valleybrook Road will be cut off. Cars will be directed up Bebout Road and back down East Big Bird Road during that period of time, so. So that's the first phase of that detour.
Do we have any idea how long that's going to last?
I don't know.
Supposed to last 66 days under the contract.
66 days, that's not a good number.
Okay, next item, installation of bat boxes.
Yeah, I don't know, Ryan, you want to explain about this, and then I can run the video for this?
Yeah, I'll make it quick. The Environmental Quality Board, at one of their meetings, a representative from the high school, we have two of them, Cassidy Griffith and Grace Urban. And they're both going to hit me, because I don't remember which ones brought this up. But the AP Environmental Science class at Peters Township High School was looking to install bat boxes as part of their senior class project. We, several years ago, the township had worked with CNX, a gentleman named Dan Bits there, as part of their environmental remediation to install bat boxes at Peters Lake Fire Station and Peterswood Park. So the EQB was able to put Scott Orelli, the teacher of that environmental science course, in touch with Dan Bits. And the video that you see is the result.
So this year, we implemented a capstone project in AP Environmental Science. And we started off by bringing students out here in the fall and challenging them to develop a biodiversity conservation or enhancement project. We've been doing a lot of community projects over the years to install bat boxes at parks and schools. So we synced up with Mr. Orelli, a couple students that had bat boxes as one of their capstone projects. And we've been working together to plan this out and get the installations in today.
We installed three of them, two small ones and a big one. Most people don't know this, but it's actually surprisingly important in the pollination process, which they have a major role, like hundreds of plants that can benefit from bat pollination.
A lot of people can sometimes have issues with, like, there's like a bat inside of their house and whatnot, and that'll be very useful for them. And then bats are also very useful for the ecosystem.
Every organism has a role to play, and bats included. So bats often, you know, get sort of a reputation of being scary, but they eat a lot of insects, and they're good to have in your habitat, they're essential.
So bats have had a hard time over the last 10 years. White nose syndrome hit our area, and it's killed vast amounts of bats. So there's a lot less bats on the landscape than there used to be. So the bat boxes just make it a little easier for them. They give them habitat in places where it might not exist. Why we targeted the community projects in the parks, they're typically in areas with more houses than trees. So giving them more options makes it a better chance for them to survive.
I think that adding these three bat boxes demonstrates that Peters Township community values the environment. With, with support from the Environmental Quality Board and the other projects that, that the other AP Environmental students have proposed, we're trying to make part of it, educating the community on what kinds of small things can be done at home in order to, you know, help the environment.
You know, installing bat boxes is pretty easy, they don't have to be as elaborate or large as the ones we put up today. There's a lot of smaller boxes, you can just attach them to trees or other structures.
Everybody can make a difference, and it's not too hard. If you put your mind to something, you can really get to where you want to be.
So I want to give Ryan a lot of credit, you know, one of the things, since Ryan's taken over, working with the Environmental Quality Board, you see more of these kind of things being accomplished. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, on Saturday, the library had an event. 20 years ago, they worked with Pittsburgh History Landmarks to do oral history projects. And there were 21 of these that were gathered. And this being the 20th anniversary of that, they put together a program to review what was in those, those oral histories and tell the stories that these people recorded. You know, it's kind of a shame that there's, of this group of 21 people, there were only four of these individuals who were still alive. But their stories were fantastic. And the entrance to the library was filled, there was probably over 100 people there. And the ladies sitting up front, Margaret Dietzer, along with Carrie Weaver, put the program together. But if you know Margaret- together. But if you know Margaret, this isn't just her job. This is kind of her passion, Peters Township history. And inside the library, there is a small room devoted as an archive. And Margaret has worked hard to make that a meaningful place for people who are interested in, in the township history. One of the things, Margaret will be retiring probably in November, December of this year. And she's going to be a person who's going to be missed and very hard to replace, so. That's all I got.
Anything anybody wants to see on the next agenda? Do you have an executive session?
Nope.
Okay, we are adjourned.